Evening and welcome to the Monday, December 1st, 2025 session of the City of Lake Forest City Council. May will the clerk please call the roll.
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tac.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Clements.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Waller.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Perfect. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item is comments by mayor, and we'd just like to thank everybody in the community for coming out for the tree lighting, even though you all came a little too late, quite honestly. The bears kind of got in the way, I guess, but it was beautiful night, ultimately well attended, and it was really just a classic Lake Forest event. All right, the next item, and perhaps the most important item of the evening, is a resolution of appreciation for retiring city attorney Julie Tappendorf. So at this time, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas Julie A. Tappendorf has faithfully served as the city attorney for the City of Lake Forest for the past eight years, providing exceptional legal counsel, sound guidance, and steadfast support to the mayor, city council, and city staff, and whereas during her tenure, Julie demonstrated the highest standards of professionalism, integrity, and public service while ensuring that the city's operations, policies, and initiatives were conducted in full compliance with the law, and whereas Julie played a vital role in advising the city through numerous complex legal matters, major municipal projects and policy initiatives, consistently delivering thoughtful analysis and expert judgment that strengthen the long-term interests of the community. And whereas Julie's commitment to public service extended beyond legal expertise, the projects in which she was involved will continue to serve the city well into the future by contributing significantly to the community's character, vitality, safety, and quality of life. Whereas Julie supported, encouraged, inspired, and offered reassurance and clear guidance to individual staff members, enabling them to confront challenges and resolve issues with confidence and professionalism. Whereas the city is profoundly grateful for Julie's nearly decade of unwavering dedication, deep institutional knowledge, and tireless effort in service to the residents of the City of Lake Forest. And whereas Julie will be missed as a colleague and friend, we wish her and her family all the best in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens and staff of the City of Lake Forest to Julie A. Tappendorf for eight years of loyal and faithful public service by means of this resolution, which will be spread upon the permanent records of the city council and a signed copy which will be delivered to Ms. Tappendorf. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Julie?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you all of you. All right, I'm gonna run through all of you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you, thank you.
My hands are cold.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. It's been really my pleasure to work with all of you, all of the staff members I've worked with over the years. I will say I probably won't miss night meetings as much as any other part, but I have loved working with Lake Forest. Very professional, kind and considerate people, many interesting and challenging issues, but always dealt with very professionally, and you have some of the best staff, if not the best staff. So you're very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, a couple additional events just to make everybody aware of. First is the local pop-up shop. City is partnering with Lake Forest Lake Bluff Chamber to host the annual Think Local Pop-Up Shop. This year, the shop will be right here at City Hall. Sixteen local nonprofit organizations are participating, and the proceeds from sales go directly to those organizations. Shop opens this Thursday, December 4th, and is open Thursdays and Fridays through December 19th from 11:00 to 4:00. Second is the Winter Market. Fifth Annual Winter Market will take place Saturday, December 13th, and Saturday, December 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is at the Telegraph Road Train Station, 911 Telegraph Road. It's a great opportunity to support local small businesses and artisans while visiting with friends and neighbors. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. Evening. Under tonight's omnibus agenda, you have a consideration for water main testing services near the Wesley and Waukegan intersection. As you recall, this was discussed at length at your last city council meeting on November 17th. I will defer to our Public Works staff if there are any technical questions about the scope of the work, but I did want to run through with council some of the anomalies on the timing of the scope of the work. And so if you recall from our last conversation, and I don't know if you'll be able to see this pointer here, the area in question, this is the Intersection Improvement Project. There's the pump station and the driveway. The water main in question that we're looking is that stretch west of the pump station before you get to Waukegan Road. As part of the study and analysis, we'll also be looking at comparatively analyzing some of this area east of the pump station as well, which I think, again, will help contextualize what the quality and condition of the pipe is. That area of the pipe that's west of the pump station, as Public Works had communicated, has not experienced any main breaks to date. By contrast, the area, the pipe east of the pump station, running all the way to Ridge and to 41, has had several breaks, and the break most recently that led to the boil order was about a half a mile east of where the pump station is located. So as you can see, just from the timing on the screen, if city council approves the study and analysis that we're looking to expedite, then we would anticipate the data analysis to be complete by mid-December and results to the city by the very end of December. The challenge is with this project being out to bid in just a couple of weeks here, by January 2nd, we really need to let IDOT know whether we are comfortable proceeding with the project or whether we needed to pause because we were looking to incorporate additional water main work into this project. As you can see, on January 16th, the actual bid opening is scheduled to occur. Meanwhile, our next city council meeting, because of the holidays, isn't scheduled to occur until January 19th. Even...
Twenty eighth.
It is the 20th. You're right. I apologize. In any event, even if we were to contemplate a special meeting between, we'd have to try to find one between that December 30th and January 2nd timeline. There's only two days that exist, and New Year's Eve, New Year's Day are not ideal times to be scheduling a meeting. So really, what's being asked of city council tonight, as you contemplate approval of that omnibus agenda item, is affording staff the discretion to exercise professional judgment on whether to proceed or delay the Intersection Improvement Project based on the results of that analysis. And while we don't have a crystal ball, I would say in simplified terms, and Public Works can answer this in a more detailed manner if needed, if, based on the results of the analysis, if we have confidence that we have at least 10 years' life expectancy out of that pipe without needing to contemplate replacement, then we would recommend proceeding with the Intersection Improvement Project as scheduled this upcoming spring and summer. Conversely, if there is concern that the quality and condition of the pipe is such that we can't confidently say we would get 10 years, or it would be some amount less than 10 years, then we would recommend pausing the project, designing the water main replacement to incorporate into a larger project the following year. And so those are the kind of the parameters we're looking at. Just wanted to ask council if there was comfort with that. There's not a lot of alternatives for us at this point. I'm very comfortable in Public Works' ability to assess that based on the data we receive and my understanding of what the scope of work will be. But with that, I'd be happy to either answer any questions about the timeline or defer to Public Works staff about any more technical questions.
Are there questions or concerns about the proposal? Alderman Powers.
Just to be clear, are you saying if the analysis comes back and says we have at least 10 years, then we'll move forward with the project? If it's less than 10 years, won't? What's the binary decision that you're asking us to make?
Yeah. Essentially, that's correct. And again, these are all going to be, you know, estimates and assumptions. Nobody has a crystal ball, but based on the quality and condition of the pipe, if we have reasonable confidence that its life expectancy exceeds 10 years, then we would move forward with the project. If we felt the main needed to be replaced sooner than that, then we would contact IDOT, pause the project, and then come back to council to seek support for designing water main replacement that could be incorporated into the project further down the road. But again, those who've been on council for a little while know, we've been talking about this project for many years. The intersection does present significant safety concerns. It's just not well-designed, given the volume of traffic it has there and people turning in almost every direction. And so I think if we can proceed this year, that's our preference. But if the quality of the pipe has deteriorated to the point we think it needs to be replaced in a few years, then I think the prudent thing to do would be pausing.
Okay. Thank you. Quick question about the at-time estimate and how much confidence whoever it is who's going to give us the report has. Is there a plus minus one, two, three years on the estimates due?
I'll let the engineer speak to that one.
Good evening. Yeah, so the data that we will be receiving, well, it won't necessarily be given to us in terms of this is how many years of life that you have. What they'll be providing us is basically a heat map of all the water mains, so it'll be color-coded, red presumably being, you know, areas that are in bad condition. But basically, what they're gonna look at is like the section loss in any given section of pipe. So based off of, you know, research over the last 50 to 100 years, empirical evidence, you know, they basically have their own system, or the industry actually does, where, and I have to look at their chart, but as an example, like if there is a pipe where they say, hey, this pipe segment has more than 30% section loss, so the, you know, the thickness of the pipe has deteriorated 30%, we would extrapolate that to a pipe that would probably not last another 10 years. So there's a little bit of extrapolation that has to go into it, but it's really based off of the thickness of the pipe and how much it has deteriorated.
Okay. So no real answer to that, which is fine. I mean, it's relatively new.
Yeah. It's a new technology. I mean, they have performed research in another town in Illinois, Bloomington, Illinois, I believe, where they've actually performed this testing. They got the results, and they actually dug up certain areas of it, and their accuracy has actually been pretty high in terms of corroborating the results that they have seen. But it's really based on section loss, and then from that, we can determine if the pipe is critical to go ahead and replace at this time.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
And I would only add to Byron's point, as I had mentioned in the beginning, because we'll also be looking at some areas east of the pump station where there have been main breaks. Again, I think that'll be helpful comparative data to where we know what the condition of that pipe has deteriorated to the degree that we've experienced several breaks. So if it's comparable when we're looking at the different sections, that kind of tells us the answer.
Very good. Do you have what you need from us? Yes?
So if the stuff you're gonna do east, if you find something, does that then delay the whole project? Or is it, you're more concerned about from the pumping station to Waukegan?
Correct. The latter.
The latter. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Do you have what you need?
I believe so. Any concerns or objections to that approach?
Okay.
Then all we would need is approval of the study, which is included in your omnibus.
Omnibus?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. The next item is committee reports. Oh, opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Please come up to the desk. Name, address, phone number.
Hi, I think I'll stick with PolyPositive today, Elf1, and welcome to, what did I think about? Let me think. Oh, walking in candy cane season where we all prefer the candy canes. Anyway, just a special thank you to the Parks and Rec. I have personally tried out most of the equipment, the new exercise equipment, and have found a few personal favorites. I just have to figure out how to hang upside down, which is one that I love, and it's not there. I encourage everyone to try it. There's an attached rebounder that's amazing. The swings are fabulous, and they do hold adults. So anyway, thank you to our snowplows because they're amazing. So I appreciate it, and thank you to all of you. So, see you later.
Well, thank you. Are there others? All right, hearing none. Then we'll move on to committee reports. The next report is from the Finance Committee. This will be the Gorton Community Center 2026 Budget Presentation. It will be presented by Will Georgie, Amy Wagliardo, and Bob Scales.
Hi, everyone. My name is Will Georgie. I'm the chair of the board at Gorton. Thanks all for your time tonight. And more importantly, thank you all for the partnership that the city has with the Gorton Center. We really appreciate it. It adds a lot of value to us. So this is my eighth year on the board at Gorton. We've, you know, I've been part of the budgeting process for all those years, and we put a lot of time and effort into it, a lot of thought into it. And frankly, we've done pretty well with budgeting over the years, I'd say. So the budgeting process started several months ago. I've been part of several of the meetings. We approved it in our board meeting in October, just last month. And now I'd like to introduce Amy Wagliardo to kind of go over some of the highlights.
Okay. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you to the council for attending Gorton events. It's nice to see you there from time to time and for your support of all that we're doing there. You heard from Will, and I'd just like to remind everyone of what Gorton's mission and vision statement are each time we come. Gorton's mission statement is to be the gathering place in the heart of our community where people connect, converse, learn, listen, play, and perform. And our vision statement is Gorton Center is the destination for arts, entertainment, and learning that fosters connection across all ages. A few highlights from this last year in 2025. We are currently with the City of Lake Forest, very excited to be repairing drainage issues around the entrance to the Children's Learning Center in the patio, as well as Gorton received a grant and has some board-designated funds to enlarge the patio. And it's a process that we've worked with the city on for a number of years, and we're very excited that it's going to be completed soon. Gorton has raised $3 million toward future capital improvements, some upgrading, updating of technology in the theater, and some repositioning of some spaces on the first floor. We switched customer relationship ticketing systems to provide a more seamless patron experience. We put that into the pipeline at the end of 2024, and it went into production in January. And almost immediately, we started getting more donations as people checked out when they'd buy tickets. And I just checked when I was doing this presentation, and our number of donors to Gorton is up 20% this year, just from that change, which is pretty amazing. I mean, these are mostly small donations, but just the, it's really important to have, you know, a large, you know, from small to large number of donors, and so we're so thrilled by that. And then I'll talk a little bit about this as it relates to the budget later, but we have new management at the Children's Learning Center that both the director and the assistant director come from the world of learning centers, have experience at other larger corporate learning center environments. And they implemented a new software system that allows better family communication. It restricted our tuition framework, and we're also currently running at full capacity with a waitlist that is six to eight months long. We also offered more summer camps than ever before. We had 56 distinct summer camps, which we had 37 in 2024, and served 1,000 children across 24 Chicagoland zip codes. We added a new position, Director of Operations, which I'll also talk about a little bit when we get to the budget. This is just something that we've thought about for, actually about 18 months prior to that, and was a board-supported initiative based on the growth that we've seen internally and just being able to effectively manage all of the growth and the things that are going on at Gorton. This person is managing now, just came on board two weeks ago, and is currently, is now managing our programming and facilities staff, which is a huge, already, I'm just, it's so wonderful to have him. And Gorton Drama Studio, which is a program that we just started about three years ago, has really hit its groove with weekly class schedules. We've tried lots of different things, and the mix in the community partnerships that we have has really come a long way in 2025. And then I always like to remind at this presentation that Gorton is a catalyst for economic vitality in Lake Forest. We employ 36 people, and in 2025, we've currently welcomed patrons from over 250 unique zip codes. So when they come to Lake Forest, they also dine, go to the, have coffee, purchase flowers, and other, and visit our other establishments. So I think it's important, Gorton is an important part of the economic vitality here. This is just a montage that our wonderful Director of Marketing created of some of the highlights of things that have gone on at Gorton in 2025. We have everything from our original production of Peter Pan. There's a picture there of them flying Peter Pan around the stage, the Lost Boys, in the upper right. Our Irish dance program is thriving. We had Jordano Dance back here. The gentleman who's speaking in the mic in the lower left is the guy who does the text from Your Teenager on Instagram. If you follow him, he was hilarious. He was there in January, and many other wonderful events. So it's been a fun year so far, and we still have, you know, 30 more days. So it's gonna be exciting. We're looking forward to 2026. This is the structure of our budget. Our revenue comes from these areas. So we have five distinct revenue levers. One is our nonprofit tenants. We still have eight nonprofit tenants on the second floor. We rent our space to others for their meetings, events, memorial services, wedding receptions, birthday parties, whatever people are wanting to do. We have the Children's Learning Center. We present our own events, films, and classes. And of course, then we have, we raise funds. About 25% of our budget comes from unearned revenue. So this is the budget, which of course, the city council has a little bit bigger picture of this than what fits on this screen, but I want to point out a couple of things. So I mentioned our Director of Operations position. This was a position that was approved by the board through special funding in 2025. And actually, we didn't use all of it because we didn't hire him till November, but that position, when it was approved by the board and given special funding, board-approved funding, it was understood that that might need to continue with special funding for a couple of years. It's not a revenue generating position, although I do think it will lead to revenue generation and will help us with building utilization and some other things that will lead to revenue. But because of some of the other things that are happening in the budget, we were able to put that position in the budget. So our operation, operating budget went up, or expenses increased by that amount. They also went up for two other reasons on our personnel side. One, we increased our, the amount that we are covering, and this is something we've been trying to do for a number of years, for our employees on their healthcare. We went from a 50% contribution to a 75% contribution in 2025. And we also are in the second year of a three-year plan to match 401K contributions. We're hoping to get to 3%. Last year, or this current year, oh, this current year, we matched at 1%, and next year, it'll be 2%. So that additional expense. So that is the main levers of increase in expense on the operations front. And then I wanted to talk about the Children's Learning Center a little bit, in a little more detail. We are operating at capacity. We also reconfigured the way we do tuition, and we do have that software that now very helpfully can project exactly how much revenue we're going to have and what our loads are in each classroom. So the expense has gone up because if you have a full classroom, you need, you know, instead of 1.5 FTEs, you might need two or 2.5 in the classroom to keep it within the ratios that DCFS requires. But also because of, again, this is a trend that we've seen, but because of the number of children, first of all, that we're at full capacity, but the number of children that we see for full-time care has continued to increase over time. So what started as a very, well, even when I started, almost 10 years ago, we had a lot of kids who were there just, you know, one morning a month, one morning a week, maybe for two hours. The minimum amount of time that any child is there now is for half a day for two days a week. So over the course of the year, we now have this software that tells us exactly the kind of revenue we can see from those full rooms and the increased use of the facility. So that is reflected in the budget. I'm gonna now hand it over to Bob, and then I'll come back up and answer any questions you have.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Scales. I'm a city director and the chair of the Finance Committee. And the first thing I want you to know is, I lived near that corner. I was taking a shower when the water main broke. So I'm looking forward to that being repaired. Anyway, as a city director and a finance chair, the focus is to make sure that the budgeting process is a reasonable one. We're using good assumptions, and that we want to scrutinize any material changes between our budget and our actuals for the year. And there was nothing radical about the budget this year. It's much like last year. There was some changes, however, and Amy has mentioned that. Operations expenses have gone up. They've gone up for basically the three reasons. We hired an operations director. We're improving the healthcare plan for our employees, and we're improving the 401K. All of these are not just reasonable, they're really good ideas. And I'm actually, I'm very proud of Gorton for considering its employees as its success allows it to make those kinds of changes. And the operations director is great because all of us have learned a long time ago that when somebody's doing a great job, make sure you help them and support them and allow them to do what they do best. And this director is going to allow Amy to be even more creative and productive than she has in the past. What else? The Children's Learning Center, the incomes is going up, but the expenses are going up with it. There's nothing... There's nothing concerning about that. It actually is, is also a good sign. So with that, if you have questions of me, I'm happy to answer. I, I'm very comfortable with this budget. I hope you are too, and that you'll approve it tonight. And if you have any questions about my experience with my shower, I'm happy to, to answer that as well.
Are there any questions?
Alderman Walter.
The only question I had was, you have a $2 million endowment that you're stated to maintain. Can you tell us where our current endowment stands?
Sure. Well, it's actually around $6 million.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that, that is managed by Wintrust, and Gorton draws on that endowment very modestly. Actually, the returns in the endowment exceed the draw that it takes every year. So I think we're, we're very comfortable with, with that circumstance.
Thank you.
Good. Alderman Weber.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to see you, the three of you up here and presenting these figures. As Amy and I started together back at the Children's Learning Center just over 10 years ago, it's certainly come a long way, and I just want to say you should all be so proud at the programming and what it contributes to our community.
Well, thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Eileen.
She's, she's, thank for, for all of that.
It's a great team.
Very good. Other questions, comments? Alderman Bathfeld.
Well, I couldn't let this go since I have a long history with all of you, and, and Amy and Bob and Will, you guys have done a fabulous job without me.
We were very blessed to have Nick on our board for eight years, and so you guys are the lucky ones now.
Very good. Other comments or questions? Okay. Amy, additional comments?
No.
No, we're all good. Listen, you know, it's, it is the phoenix, right? This thing arising from the ashes not that long ago, and it's a remarkable success and a real gift to the community, I would say that. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask the council for a motion to approve the Gorton Community Center 2026 budget.
So moved.
Second.
And this will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Clemens.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2025 tax levy, final reading presented by Katie Skibby, finance director.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Tect. The 2025 final tax levy, second reading, is before you this evening. This has come before council several times now, actually five times, and this will be the final, final time we will be reviewing the 2025 tax levy. Detailed schedules are included in your packet, but we have a general overview here for your consideration. The proposed property tax levy is an increase of 4.51%. A couple of items I'd like to highlight, one of which is the 2025 tax levy continues to phase in the debt service for the police facility. So this is the second of three years in the phase-in. The first year was an increase of $500,000 to the capital improvement levy. This year, the capital improvement levy is decreasing as the debt service comes on to help base into that, base in the impact to taxpayers. There's also a abatement of the police bonds of $230,000 to reduce the impact to taxpayers for the police facility. This will be in effect when we issue the bonds in January. The debt levy also includes all debt that is supported by property taxes. There are a few debt issuances that are supported by other sources, and on the omnibus agenda for this evening, you'll see two abatement ordinances for those issuances as well. The general levy is increasing by 2% this year. This is the fourth year that we are levying less than CPI for the operations levy. CPI for 2024 was 2.9%. That is the amount that was subject to the property tax extension limitation law, and like I said, is the amount less than inflation. The 4.51% increase does include the library levy as the city levies the taxes for the library. Excluding debt, this levy is only increasing by 2.16%. So as in prior years, we have a relatively modest levy, and then we have some special projects that are increasing the levy for a period of time. And then lastly, included in the ordinance in your packet tonight is the School District 67 levy. This is an estimate. The School District 67 Board will approve their levy, but due to our charter, we have to include it in our ordinance. So you'll see that in your packet. Moving on to the estimated household impact, so for a home with a market value of $1 million, the proposed 2025 tax levy will increase the city portion of the tax bill by $164.88. The current estimated equalized assessed valuation from Lake County is an increase of 8.1%. This is an estimate and is reflected of the current information provided by Lake County as of November. This estimated impact also includes both the city and library levies, and the city is approximately 22% of the levy, while the library is approximately 3% of your total property tax bill. And then this slide just shows the use of property taxes, both for the 2025 levy and the 2009 tax levy. You can see all the different categories across operations, pensions, capital improvements, and debt service. And you'll see that the pension levy has increased quite a bit, and this is, has been driven primarily by the public safety pension funding changes that we have adopted in recent years to really strengthen our long-term sustainability and to bring down the unfunded liability. You'll also notice that in 2009, there wasn't a capital improvement levy. This was established in 2016 and allowed us to establish a dedicated revenue source for capital improvement projects. This helped with our pay-as-you-go funding model and has reduced debt financing and the associated interest costs. Overall, the chart shows that the city has shifted its levy structure slightly over time to respond to rising pension obligations and to invest in overall infrastructure needs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the 2025 tax.
Are there any questions for Director Skibby? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. All right. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to, for final approval of an ordinance establishing the 2025 tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Clemens.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Very good. Next item is items for omnibus vote consideration. As always, if there are any items that Alderman would like removed or taken separately, please let me know after I complete reading of all the items. There are 12 items tonight.
That's true.
The first, approval of the Monday, November 3, 2025, and Monday, November 17, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Second, approval of the check register for the period October 18 through November 14, 2025. Three, approval of ordinances abating the 2025 tax levies for various geo alternate revenue bond issues. The final reading. Item four, consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule. Final reading. Item five, consideration and approval of increasing the deductible with the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency from $25,000 to $50,000, and authorization for the city manager to make the required deductible payments. Item six, award of a contract for 2026 GIS services to MGP Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $131,505, and 2026 plotting costs in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,299 for total cost of $133,804. Item seven, approval for a three-year renewal of Adobe Acrobat licensing with Hypertec in the amount of $29,259. Item eight, approval to waive the bid process and approve water main testing for the Waukegan and Wesley intersection project to the RJN Group, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $49,834 to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $4,983 for a total cost of $54,817. Item nine, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission in support of a building scale variance for a poolhouse at 1 South Stonegate Road. First reading and if desired, final approval. Item 10, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning board of appeals for 831 Rosemary Road, 1147 Valley Road, and 1450 Old Mill Road. First reading and if desired, final approval. Item 11, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit to authorize a new real estate office at Jameson Sotheby's International Relty at 1050 Northwestern Avenue. Desired by council, waive first reading, grant final approval. And finally, item 12, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board for 1124 Fairview Avenue and 1781 Knollwood Lane. First reading and if desired by council, final approval. Are there any items that the Alderman would like removed or taken separately? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the 12 omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Bathfeld.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. The next item is old business, consideration of a recommendation by staff to modify parking regulations in the central business district and implement new technology solutions for permanent management and parking enforcement, presented by Carrie Cowpey, Assistant to the City Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're pleased to share our initial recommendations to modify our parking regulations in the central business district and to implement new technology in support of our program. As part of your FY '26 priorities, council requested an evaluation of CBD parking and recommendations to improve the user experience. Our staff committee has spent the last four months conducting this evaluation and forming our recommendations. So before we go further into the details, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge all of the staff who participated in our committee. The recommendations before you tonight were created and vetted by 12 team members from seven, seven different city departments. It wouldn't have come together without everyone's participation and insight, and so I want to thank the committee members for their efforts, those who are here tonight, and those So at our October 6 city council meeting, we shared with you the results of the parking survey that was taken by over 900 people. And based on that survey feedback, our committee identified three goals we want to achieve with our recommendations. The first goal is to simplify our parking zones and signage. The second is to ensure that customer zones are near shopping and dining, and to designate employee parking zones. And third, to improve our permit management and parking enforcement capabilities through technology. So for each listed goal, we identified the problems we're trying to solve and the recommended solutions for each problem that's in line with our stated goals. Our first problem that we identified is there are too many time zones. So currently, in the CBD, there are six different time zones, and you can see many of them on your screen. Some parking lots have time zones within them, and various time zones run along the same block of street parking. All of these regulations require different signage to designate the changing zones, and some signs were even placed as a courtesy to businesses but don't follow city code and are therefore unenforceable. So to simplify the parking zones and signage, the committee is recommending the following. One, reduce and streamline the time zones on the street and in the lots. And two, eliminate any unenforceable parking signs and limit signage just to that that's necessary per block. For street parking, we're recommending that all street parking in the CBD be 90 minutes, unless otherwise designated as a specific 30-minute zone. Our recommended 30-minute zone is identified in purple on the map on the screen, and it's zoomed out, or zoomed in for you. It is primarily located on the west side of Western between Market Square and Deer Path, the north side of Deer Path between Western and Bank, and a portion of Bank Lane north of Deer Path. We also have a 30-minute zone near the post office. The committee designated these areas as the 30-minute zone due to the high number of Quick Stop businesses. Yes, Door, Starbucks, Walgreens, Once Upon a Bagel, and the survey told us that these are the places where customers struggle to obtain parking for their Quick Airens. In terms of parking lots, we're recommending that all parking lots have three-hour limits with 30-minute zones on the eastern perimeters, which are closest to the businesses, again considering customers who need Quick Stop Airens. Reducing the time zones will naturally eliminate a lot of the signage throughout the, and we'll be able to post just that that is necessary per block. The second problem we identified is the overlapping zones within the parking lots and lack of customer parking closest to the businesses. The map displayed on the screen here are the current parking, parking regulations in the CBD. You can see there are overlapping colors in the middle of parking lots and different regulations than the rest of the lot. Because we have relaxed parking enforcement since COVID, the regulations that do exist are often ignored, and permit holders and employees are taking up that parking that's closest to the businesses. So in order to combat this, the, the committee identified four recommendations to reorganize the zones in the surface lots. This includes designated customer parking lots, employee zones in the perimeters, CBD lots near the train stations, and streamlining the overnight parking. The map on the screen is displaying the new recommended zones for the entire CBD, but I'll go through each one separately so you can see them more clearly. These three-hour customer zones have been placed closest to the businesses. The lots are the City Hall Lot, the Forest Avenue Lot, the Corder Lot, and there is additional parking in the Bank Lane Parking Garage. These would be three free three-hour zones, and the perimeters of these lots would have 30-minute short-term parking. These three parking lots and the parking garage offer almost 400 spaces for customer parking. Our employee zones have been moved to the perimeter: Westminster, Corder Lot, Oakwood, UP South commuter lot, and the Bank Lane Parking Garage. Between all of those listed parking lots, there are approximately 600 parking spaces available for employees. CBD permit holders include commuters who utilize the train, college students, high school students, and residents in multifamily homes who do not have driveways or garages. We've identified three lots where CBD holders or daily fee patrons can park, but employees cannot. And this will ensure that our commuters are able to park closest to the train stations, and college students can park closest to the school during daytime hours. These lots have approximately 250 spaces combined. CBD permit parking holders can also utilize the employee lots. For overnight parking, we've streamlined it into two parking lots. Survey feedback revealed that a significant amount of parking in the McKinley Lot was being utilized by Lake Forest College students who park their car for days or weeks and don't move it. And so we want to ensure that we're providing ample parking for these students, but move it out of the more heavily utilized lot. So our recommendation is to move the overnight parking up to the Westminster Lot, and also keep a small section of overnight parking available in the Oakwood Lot to accommodate those on the west end of the district. Moving away from the maps and the parking zones to the city's management of the parking program, the third problem that we identified was our difficulty enforcing the parking regulations and a very large... regulations and a very largely manual permit management process. On the enforcement side, our federal courts have ruled that chalking tires is a violation of search and seizure laws, and because the police can no longer chalk the tires, they don't have an efficient way to conduct time zone enforcement. On the permit management side, we're utilizing physical hang tags for the CBD permits. They're manually logged into the system by finance staff. Permit holders move the tags from car to car, and we have to replace lost tags regularly. So to address these problems, we are recommending technology for both programs. Staff has identified a permit management system that integrates with Park Mobile, which is the daily fee stations, and the proposed enforcement technology solution. It requires permit holders to enter their license plates when purchasing a permit, and there would no longer be physical hang tags. On the enforcement side, we are recommending purchasing an automated license plate reader system. This integrates with the proposed permit management system, the Park Mobile payment system, and the information is automatically sent between all the systems. It's capable of both time zone enforcement and permit enforcement. As with any new program, there are financial impacts that we need to consider, the first being the cost of the new technology. And so while we have not officially made vendor selection yet or finalized this, we are able to make general estimates on the cost based on the RFP responses. We are expecting that our permit management system will not cost more than $10,000 annually, and the ALPR enforcement technology would cost approximately $60,000 in the first year and have ongoing maintenance costs of $10,000. Total investment would be $70,000 in year one and $20,000 moving forward. Another aspect to consider is the cost of permits. The current permit rates are listed at the top of the slide. You can see we offer different rates for businesses, residents, and for non-residents. On an annual basis, permits sold at these rates generate the revenue that's listed at the bottom of the screen, and specifically related to the businesses, the city collects approximately $135,000 annually from the sale of permits. In the parking survey, employees stated they would be incentivized to park in the perimeter lots if no or low-cost permits were available to them. Given the fact that permits for businesses are already discounted lower than the resident rate, staff does not recommend reducing the permit cost further. However, if council does desire to reduce the employee permit rate, we are recommending not reducing by more than 25%. We will be taking on additional expenses, given the new technology and the sale of the permits help to support that aspect of the program. And finally, valet permits. We were asked to consider the possibility of adding valets to adding valet permits to address some of the challenges. So we currently have four valets operating in the city, but outside of a special use permit for certain restaurants, the city has no valet requirements. We've heard concerns that they're taking up the parking closest to the restaurants, and it makes it difficult for customers. The committee researched other communities' valet permit regulations, and typically applications require the submission to include a parking plan that includes but is not limited to the items you see on the screen. This allows the city to vet the plan, require adjustments, and not approve any plan that's inconsistent with the city's desires. There are significant benefits to a valet permit process. All valets would be required to have a parking plan, but the city has control over the final plan. We can identify traffic or safety concerns and require any changes, and if the plan is not followed and we're receiving complaints, we can revoke the permit for noncompliance. This would give the city greater overall control of valet operations and likely lead to greater compliance. There are challenges to a valet permit system, such as violations can be difficult to observe, and program administration requires additional staff time to manage. And so at this time, we are asking for your feedback on the proposed recommendations, and specifically, we're asking for direction regarding low-cost employee permits and direction regarding valet permits. Your feedback tonight will help guide our final recommendations, which we expect to bring to council in January, and we would bring any draft code amendments that are needed as part of this process as well. And so with all of that, I would be very happy to take any questions you have.
All right. Let's start with Alderman Novit.
Thank you, Mayor Tuck. Carrie, the slide that you showed of the north train station parking lot, all the way up McKinley, is there, has there been any conversation with the high school about the high school kids that park up there?
So we do intend to continue to have the high schoolers able to park at the top. So these lots, I assume you're speaking about the very top in there?
Yeah, the furthest.
So this entire lot would be available for employees and CBD permit holders, and that includes the high school students.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, can I ask one other question? The Corda Lot?
Yes.
That's the one that, that is on Forest? What street is that on?
So that is right by hometown?
Okay, it's across the street.
By the bank.
What's the lot behind it? There's a property, it goes all the way through to Oakwood, doesn't it?
I have to look at the...
That parking lot? I think it does.
It does.
I think it does. Does the city not control that, or is that parking designated for something else that it's not included in this map?
Oh, so are you speaking of that, the other half of that lot?
Yes.
Okay, so what the, so MGP, when they put the map together, they were just highlighting that this is customer parking, and we would have an employee section? So that whole lot is part of this consideration, but we just had divided it, and I think on the map, he, he just put the colors in the same spot.
Okay.
But yes.
But the part that, that hits up on Oakwood?
Mm-hmm.
That's blank, that doesn't have a color on it?
Yeah, I'm saying I think that's just a mistake in how the map was transposed.
So that whole lot would be green, then?
So the half would be green and half would be orange.
Okay, because orange is the...
He just accidentally put them on the same side instead of splitting it up.
Okay, but orange is the employee parking?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
No.
Orange is the customer parking.
Customer parking, right.
Green is the employee.
So would that be incorporated into green? So that could be employee parking as well?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Levert?
Carrie, thanks. Could you give us an example if employee parking permits were 25% off, what that would be? I know there was a slide with fees, but...
Sure. I'll go back to it. So if we reduced it by 25%, the employee permits would be $15 monthly and $135 annually.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, a follow-up on that. The employee parking comes through the employer, maybe the employee pays it, but you have to be...
You have to be a bit...
With employees that qualify for this parking permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes?
So I have two questions for you, Carrie. The first question is kind of an enforcement question. So if I'm a high schooler and I work Monday and Tuesday for a local business in town, and I park and I park in the employee section, and my license plate is registered as an employee, but then on Wednesday, I study with my friends at Starbucks and I park as a customer of Starbucks, I could potentially get a ticket because my tag is registered as an employee tag?
So we would be able to set up the enforcement system, so your license plate would be registered as an employee, but if you are parked in a time zone, you're still subject to the time zone enforcement. So if you parked in a 90-minute spot, the officer would still drive by, scan the license plate, and you would still have 90 minutes to be a customer. We recognize that people often have multiple roles, and so they still would be subject to the time zone.
But if my shift was less than 90 minutes, I could park in a 90-minute zone closer to my business?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. And then the second question is, you said that in your notes here that the employer would manage the permit. So what is it, would an employer buy a year pass and then give it to Sally for her summer employment, and then give it to Jim for his fall employment, and then give it to somebody else?
So these are things that we would have to vet with the permit management system for how to set this up. These are conversations we will have to have with our vendor, but every permit would have license plate registered to it. If there's a limit to how many license plate you can register per permit, that's something we have to have a conversation with our vendor about to understand better.
I'd like to get the answer to that if I could at some point in time. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Weber?
Thanks, Carrie, for the time, and we had an opportunity to speak this afternoon regarding some of the questions that I had, most specifically as someone who kind of lives and breathes the downtown parking, and this has been a subject matter of importance to mine for many, many years. So I'm thrilled that your committee of team members on staff have addressed this and really narrowed in. A couple of things stand out to me. One is there's no guarantee that business owners are going to buy these permits despite the changes in, in the zone, the time zones and the change in the locations. And being that I spend an awful lot of time on the south end of the business district, I see a lot of activity of both with quick shopping as well as long shopping, between running into the Chase Bank or maybe Peanut Gallery quickly, or staying to get, you know, hair and nails done at a salon, or maybe go to, you know, the Deer Path or one of our great restaurants. So my question is, how do we, how does the city approach the business owners to encourage them, or is there an enforcement at all that can be made to purchase? The business I work for purchases passes that are passed among those part-time employees that are in-scheduled that day, for example?
Sure. So I think the, the answer is the same as the question that Alderman Walther had, that it's something we have to vet with our permit management vendor to see how do we assign license plates, how many can be assigned, is there an opportunity to share passes, or is it one employee per pass? And then from the enforcement perspective, I do think that we've had a situation where for many years now, we have not had a mechanism to enforce, and while now we will have that mechanism, I think that's what's going to drive, hopefully, the businesses to purchase the employee passes, because otherwise their employees are going to be receiving citations since the enforcement piece is going to return.
So if you have someone who's a resident of Lake Forest, who is similar to what Alderman Walther said, they are a resident of Lake Forest, they park in a three-hour lot, they move to another location, whether they're working or not, how does the system register that, then? So if they move to another location, are they then ticketed, or does their time start over?
So if, so again, we would have to vet this with our vendor, but our understanding preliminarily is that we can set up a zone. So let's say we set up the City Hall Lot as a three-hour zone. When the officer drives through and scans the plates and then comes back over three hours later, it would identify any cars that are still in the lot, not necessarily the same space.
Okay.
And so if an employee was just jumping in that lot from parking spot to parking spot, it would flag that. But again, to have more concrete details on that, it's something we would have to vet with the RFP respondents.
I think getting that information would be helpful, I think, as well as the communication piece moving forward once something is adopted. But I think addressing specifically part-time employees who are also residents, because I can probably name a whole bunch of businesses that have women or men who work part-time and may only have a shift for part of the day, and how do, how do we make it economical for businesses who are already currently using the system? Because I'm not sure that lowering by 25%, five dollars, I don't, I don't think that that's going to be a big driver. I'm just speaking, you know, my own personal opinion, but I'd love, I would love to hear specifically from some of these businesses who aren't purchasing to say, are they going to do this?
Sure. I don't know if I can answer on behalf of the businesses, but I...
I don't know if a survey is something that you could do.
We can certainly look into survey options. I'm not entirely sure I understand what the question is that we're asking the business.
So the question is, are they going to purchase the passes or not?
And I can jump in.
We're spending a lot of time on something that we don't, there's no...
At least I can say anecdotally in conversations I've had with business owners who have acknowledged not purchasing passes, they do so because they know the city has been lax in its enforcement.
Okay.
If a byproduct of this new program is understanding that you can run the risk of not purchasing a permit for your employee, but they're going to start getting citations every time they come for a shift, I would expect that would change behavior pretty quickly.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Though I have a question, and it is, so does this license plate reader system interface with the Flock cameras? So in other words, if we're going through scanning license plates and we're finding that there's problematic parkers, are these things going to interface? If not, why not?
It can, depending on what system, but the ones that we spoke to both said they can integrate with basically every other parking software partner, and Flock is readily available, more on the enforcement end, but the systems will talk to each other, and we own all the data that would be on this particular system. So it does, it does a separate job from Flock. The data will be, we can run queries separately, but it will integrate. So if it saw, if it read a plate that was parked and it didn't hit a flock, the person was wanted for a particular crime, it would alert the person driving that car and then send an alert to all the other officers on duty that a wanted plate from the Flock system was hitting on this other particular system.
Okay. I mean, I just think that's a nice sort of added component of this, so it's good to hear. The other question that I have, just, is it, it seems like there's a fair amount of sort of details yet to be determined in terms of how this program really works, and we're being sort of asked to approve the recommendations with a lot of sort of unknowns. So how is this going to play out for us going forward? Are we actually going to be able to answer most of those, or is this going to be something where we have a year where we implement and kind of gradually work through the bugs?
Sure, I can jump in on that, and I will say the answer's probably a little bit of both. I think a lot of the questions that I think we've heard tonight from Alderman pertain more to the enforcement side of things, and again, we haven't selected a vendor, so it's hard to answer those with specificity, but we do know that there are other models throughout many other communities that have successfully implemented this. So we're confident that the solutions exist to both the enforcement side and just getting a better understanding from the community, that both our residents and the business community, how this is received. You know, part of this will be a learning experience for us, and I think it's okay from the staff perspective, depending on council's comfort level, to live through this for a year to get a better sense where it's working well, where there may be pain points, and we can always modify it in the future. But I think the goal, as Carrie said, was to just really simplify the current process and then recognizing that a big driver of frustration and complaints we've heard is about the volume of employees taking up prime customer spots. I believe this addresses that problem, but again, some of it, until we have a vendor selected, we can't answer definitively. Having said that, I think the feedback from the council is helpful in knowing that we can incorporate some of these criteria into a request for proposal to make sure that they can meet those requirements if we were to move forward with them.
And I assume that at that point, this is going to come back to us, put out an RFP, we're going to get an actual plan in place that that particular product can provide, and then we'll have final?
Correct, and that was really the whole intent behind tonight's presentation. It was preliminary to get feedback if there's things we need to consider or additional conversations that need to happen, both with the business community, with potential vendors on the enforcement side. We'll do that, do diligence before we come back with a final recommendation.
Okay, Alderman Weber?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to touch on the valet piece, as well as part of the looking for feedback on this item. One of the thoughts that comes to mind is several of our restaurant or food service entities have the private parking either near or associated with their buildings. And when there's a large volume of patrons to those particular locations, it's been seen that the valets are kind of lining up the cars in an easy, you know, to-grab type area versus an actual parking spot. And so, my question is, is when we look at enforcement of that piece, I don't know if you want to, can you touch on sort of what the thought process with the valet? Because shouldn't they utilize their private parking first, before lining cars up down like an alley?
Sure. So if we were to pursue a valet permit process, we could set the guidelines as we see fit. When we looked at several other communities who have valet permit process, they do require that the valet submit a parking plan. And part of that parking plan is for them to have agreements with private property owners if they're going to use their lots. If those agreements aren't in place, and then the valets are violating, that would be a violation of the permit. It would be grounds for us to potentially revoke the permit. And that becomes our enforcement arm.
I would be curious to hear what other council members, if they have a comment regarding any of the valet. I mean, certainly some of the valet that are being used do a fabulous job, that I've seen. But others, you know, you end up with a 200-person event, you know, at the Deer Path, and where are they going to put all those cars, plus all of their regular, you know, dining and hotel people, if their private lot's empty? You know, they're not parking in that space? I'm just curious if there are other people who have thoughts on it.
I would just jump in, that I'm confused on the whole valet. I don't know how you're going to manage it, number one. Number two, I use it 50% of the time, or I try to park myself, and I have no problem walking two blocks. There's a lot of people who think that's too far to walk. So...
Depends on the shoes, trust me.
Yeah. Fair point. But, and the turnover with these valets, and the education of what they need to do, and how they're going to do it. And then, do they understand the plan that was submitted? That's a really, really cloudy area of understanding for me. And I would almost remove that if you want to move forward with the other stuff that's a little more understandable, and then have a different conversation about valet. But at this point, I don't get it.
Alderman Levert.
Where are the four valets? I can name three. What's the four?
Sure. So it's Sophia's, Deer Path Inn, Francesca's, and Folia.
Oh, Francesca's. Okay, thank you. When we're done with the valet, I'd like to switch to another question, but I'll let this finish.
Well, just to support Alderman Weber.
I am interested in learning more about the valets, and pursuing this application process.
And I think that's good feedback for staff, and let us do additional due diligence. I will say, in contemplating this, it was really driven by complaints we were receiving about valet services taking up all of the prime spots close to the businesses, and recognizing that we currently don't have much enforcement teeth to do anything about it. And so, this was a mechanism, perhaps imperfect. And sometimes, we don't want to let perfect be the enemy of good. It may not be a perfect solution. Might it be an improvement? Yes. And again, we can continue to tweak and modify as we learn through the experience. But again, absent some sort of valet license that we have the authority to revoke, it's just very difficult for us to meaningfully enforce anything, in terms of good behavior versus bad behavior. But good questions that were asked tonight, and we'll come back with additional answers.
Jason, real quick, when you say the valets are taking the close spots, do you mean they're coning it off, or it's just a random open spot, and they quickly run in and use it?
Yeah, and I can't speak like every scenario with specificity.
The latter's fair game. The former may be a little bit of a challenge.
I don't believe they're coning off, to my knowledge. I think it's simply a matter of if there are open spots, say, you know, on Western across the street from Sophia, they're just taking them. When really, the intent behind a valet service is to have the cars parked further away, to keep those spaces open for patrons. But Kathy, you deal with most complaints. Have you heard differently? I'm going to put you on the spot.
First of all, I think we need to acknowledge, this is a good problem to have. If we didn't have this problem. But yes, we do hear from restaurants who are not providing valet service, that the neighboring restaurant's valet is taking the closest spaces, running their patrons further away. But they're coning off a few spots right in front. That doesn't seem to be the issue. It's the latter, taking up available spaces.
And I, if it's okay, I will add that it's logical that they would cone off those places where you can drop off your car for the valet parker. That's just common sense to me. Is it okay if I ask an unrelated question? Parking on Laurel Avenue is part of, around the corner from Western, so on the same block as Sophia's. And there are a couple of small businesses on that block on Laurel. Will that be incorporated into this 90-minute parking zone? I highly recommend that it should be, because there is a salon, I've talked about this a million times, there is a salon on that block that is always impossible to get a parking space, because the workers at Sophia's pull in and stay there all day long. So I will make a personal request, that that block on Laurel, being across from Kelm Scott, that first block just west of Western Avenue, be identified as these 90-minute spots, as part of this 90-minute street parking.
And as part of coming back with final recommendations?
Yes.
We'll review all of the city code portions that would be affected by this. So to determine whether or not that is included in this zone or not.
Right now, it's got a 90-minute parking sign in front of it, for what it's worth.
And so, and we're recommending all street parking be 90 minutes?
Right.
And so, if it's listed in the code as such, and we'll make any amendments needed to address the concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Levert, off topic.
Well, it's parking-related, but not valet-related. So you mentioned Hometown earlier. That's another problematic area where they have designated parking spots for pickup orders, yet time and time again, those are taken by people who go in and stay. And they don't really monitor it. At their location in Glencoe, they actually have a person standing at the door who helps run out the to-go orders, to make sure those spots continue to flow in and out. Can that area be targeted to be improved? Because it doesn't work the way it is now. The pickup-only parking spots are totally ignored, more or less.
And so, that is one of the locations, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that is one of the locations where the sign was not, it's not compliant with city code, and it's not enforceable. It wouldn't be a sign that we would continue to support as part of this plan.
Meaning the pickup spots would disappear?
According to this plan, yes. All of the short-term parking has been moved to the perimeter of the lot. So the perimeter of the Corte lot would have 30-minute parking, so for those quick pickups. And then down on that block, again, on Western, Deer Path and Bank, we would have 30-minute quick spots, but not right in front of the business.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you for your patience and my questions. My other question is that, per this map, there are no 30-minute parking areas south of Deer Path. And I'm just asking, how come that's not considered?
So, we wanted to put all of the 30-minute short-term parking in a mostly centralized zone, right in the middle of the CBD, which is walkable to both the south and north ends of the CBD. Our goal was in streamlining and simplifying to keep the zones consistent together, rather than spread them out throughout.
But you have some across from Hometown, and then you go two blocks south, and there's none. So I would encourage us to revisit that with a section of 30-minute parking.
Sure. We have the 30 minutes in the parking lots, in all of the customer parking zones, the three-hour customer zones. And so, we can incorporate that feedback into our recommendation as well.
Or some on Western, even, further south. But there's nothing there for anyone who needs to run in for a quick stop.
Alderman Bothfeld.
Thank you.
So one of the questions you asked upfront was for feedback, or direction on what to do with providing some sort of a discount. And I think you've also, kind of as a result of all this, there are a lot of unknowns. It's not known what the vendor will do, it's not known. But one thing to consider, as you move ahead, you know, the cost lost revenue is, what, $33,000 bucks or so, would be to provide a quick incentive, like, hey folks, we're going through this massive, we're going to be changing everything. Sign up now, you got one month, and you'll get a discount. After that, the price goes up, or the price stays what it was before. As a way to try and encourage everyone into compliance. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Other questions, thoughts? All right. So as I understand it now, what we're asking the council to do is basically give a general approval to move forward with the program and research, understanding that you're all going to come back to us with greater detail later, before the program is actually implemented. Is that correct?
Correct. No action is specifically requested this evening. This was really just to, I think, gauge the temperature of the council, on where the status of the work is to date. And we'll incorporate a lot of the questions and feedback we heard into some additional work on staff's end, and we'll come back with refined recommendations.
So, we do not want a voice vote this evening on this? No. You have our temperature, yes?
I think so. Ask me again in seven weeks when we're back in front of you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is new business. And so, since we have a foot of snow, I thought it would be the perfect time to have a council directional discussion about potential directions for beach concessions at Forest Park Beach. And generally, there's nothing to vote on here. There's no factual information to be presented. But what I'm asking the council to have a brief conversation about, emphasizing brief, is whether or not the council would like to look into options for providing beach concessions, other than what currently exists. And that could range from, on the negative side, saying, you know what, it doesn't seem to be worth it, let's not do it at all, to, you know, putting an RFP out for vendors, to see if for-profit entities would like to take over that business, and perhaps enhance what's available. Or simply to optimize what we currently do. And again, all of this would need to be looked into by Parks and Rec Department, and the Parks and Rec Committee, to do research. But we don't want to ask for that to happen if there's no appetite for change. And so, I was hoping we could have a brief conversation from all the different Aldermen, as to whether or not they think that's an area that, like our Parks and Rec Department, and specifically the committee, to dig into before the upcoming season. Because if, in fact, we're going to do something different, or even optimize what we do, now's the time to start thinking about it. We're only five months away from getting back into this. So, anyway, that being said, I'll sort of open the floor to anybody who has a comment or opinion on the matter.
I'll open.
Yes?
I have, I do not go to the beach every day. I go occasionally. And when I have been there, and there is no rhyme or reason, there's no schedule to when I'm there, it's just when I'm there. It seems that if the concession stand is open, it doesn't have anything. There does not seem to be a consistent availability of products on their menu. There doesn't seem to be consistent operating hours. And I think it's a great opportunity to do something really terrific. I think the beach concession stand is important. I think we should have it. But I see a marked step back from what it was like when we first moved here, and I went to the beach all the time with my kids, to what it is now. And again, I don't go as often as I used to. But it seems really inconsistent, and really unpredictable. That's the word I'm looking for. It's unpredictable, in my experience.
So is it fair to say that the current model, or status quo, doesn't seem acceptable to you?
Not in its current state. It doesn't mean I don't want a concession stand. I don't think I want this one.
Well, as it is currently...
Yes, as it is.
...functioning, operating. Fair enough. Are there others? Alderman Bothfeld.
Are you talking about the concession stand just within a building, or could it be expanded to things on the beach, like somebody renting kayaks for people to use?
No, I think really what I'm addressing is the issue of the North Pavilion food concession, not, you know, boats and other things currently.
Okay. I'm for it.
You're for what?
I'm for improving it.
Looking into something different, a different model, you know, or at least looking into options?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Others?
I'll just, I'll voice my opinion. I think we should continue the beach concessions, expanding the variety, particularly for families. That's one of the attributes of the beach I enjoyed when I brought my children there.
Okay. So, looking into a model, perhaps expanded from what we currently have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alderman Clemmons. What is the duration that the concession stand is open now? Is it just between the two holidays, or is it open in May or September?
You can jump up. I think, I'll let Director Wick speak specifically to it. I think the short answer is slightly abbreviated from the two major holidays.
Predominantly Memorial Day to Labor Day, with weekend hours in August, as kids go back to school. So, short season.
Alderman Weber.
I think having the concessions available is great. I would say, of my constituents, many of which bring, if it's a planned visit, oftentimes they bring food down, or they'll order things like pizza from one of our local establishments. So I think if that was something to, you know, menu expansion was an option, that we could communicate, that could be something to consider. I will say, when I have gone down and used a concession for lunch on a Sunday during the summer, my kids absolutely love the french fries and chicken fingers. And if they're there with camp, any of the day camps through the Park and Rec program, all they want is money to go spend there. So I'm sure we've spent plenty of time.
Yeah, and maybe just for context for the council, one of the clear limitations that I know the mayor has addressed, is just the lack of equipment within the current concession stand. You acknowledged pretty much the extent of what can be offered, maybe mozzarella sticks too, because all that largely exists in there right now is a deep fryer. And so, having grills for chicken sandwiches and burgers, that equipment just doesn't exist right now, and that's something that we'd have to explore as part of this process.
Yes?
Is a 90-day model sustainable? I mean, who can operate a business for 90 days without maybe some subsidies? I don't, I don't, I don't think it's working the way it is now. I think it either gets, should be improved, or removed. it is now. I think it either gets, should be improved or, or removed. And somehow making it easier for local pizza places and others to deliver down there, maybe? I, I don't know. I just, who's going to take that on for 90 days a year and that's it?
Well, and again, this is not a question for the director to answer. Yeah, the, yeah, the, the issue is, do we as a council want to provide direction to Parks and Rec, both the department and the committee, to look into what realistic options there are, ranging from doing nothing to enhanced service, you know, with current vendors, or putting an RFP out for other vendors, or perhaps even going so far as to say, put it out there as a, as an option for businesses that might want to set up shop and, and run it as a for-profit entity, as an extension of their existing business. I, again, don't know the answer, but, but, but if we're going to have the department and the committee look into it, I think they need to have direction that the council wants to do that, rather than just sort of spinning their wheels and then coming back to us and say, well, why did, why did you do that? We have no interest. So all I'm asking for, I guess, is, is there a consensus that there's interest in looking at options other than the status quo?
Just, I fully support. What I didn't hear was anything about food trucks. And a food truck could certainly solve issues that existing facility infrastructure don't, doesn't provide. So I just, I would encourage you to keep that on the table as an option.
So, yes, Alderman, ours?
I think, so I think we're zeroing in on a couple of things. Number one, getting a better understanding of what service hours, operation, menu choices, and availability of those options, I think is incredibly important. I think we'll very quickly get to a point where we'll realize whether, you know, who the heavy users are, and if, if there is a sustainable model that the city wants to invest in, which obviously would include training. I mean, most of the people working the concession stands are high school or college kids. So we need to take that into consideration. And then the last thing I would point out, is there, there's a huge difference from the city getting a new deep fryer that may have the capability of doing a few more things, and turning it into a for-profit business for one of our local business owners. And to Ted's point, I think, you know, you get a beach basket from chiefs that they can, they can market to the community where you swing by, pick it up, and drive down there as an option. Taco truck, food trucks in general that are marketed, you know, especially if it's a Fourth of July holiday or a big holiday weekend, I think are options too. We just need to get a better understanding of who the users are, how frequently they're there. And then keep in mind, our parking issue's a little bit of a challenge too, because we have people that designate the beach day, and they're there for five or six hours, if not longer. So, you know, the person running down there for lunch, that's looking for a quick place to park to spend 30 minutes before they go back to work, that's a different issue altogether. And I think we just need a better understanding of what that looks and feels like for us going forward. I think it's a good idea.
Others? Alderman Clemmons?
Mike, who manages it today?
It's currently managed by Kemper. They also manage our golf course and the concessions at Deer Path Athletic Fields.
Okay.
Does Kemper have a set schedule that they operate under?
From an hourly or a day?
Yeah. Are they, do they have a consistent schedule that they are required to be there?
They do.
Okay.
But they're not... Alderman Notes?
What is our alcohol policy at the beach right now?
We do allow for sales of alcohol. In fact, Mayor Tech may have been involved in, in that coming to fruition, if memory serves correct. But I believe it's limited to beer and wine, not liquor. But you can purchase alcohol at the North Pavilion. We have.
All right. So, very good. So anyway, no action to be taken on this, other than to provide some direction, I think, based on a consensus of what I'm hearing, that we would in fact like Parks and Rec Department and the committee to look into any and all options that might be feasible for a, an enhanced product at the beach. Very good. Very nice conversation. I appreciate the time. All right. All right. So the next item is additional items for discussion or comments by council members. Are there any? Okay. Now, at this time, we are prepared to enter into an executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C and 1. City Council will discuss specific personnel. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
Don't move.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. And I would like to note for the vote that there will be a 20-minute delay before we start executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bothfeld?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
The notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
20-minute delay.
Eight, yes, I know, Carrie.
Take a nap.
Okay. We're in exec, we're turning for additional business at the completion of executive session. And now there will be a celebration with...